Good evening and welcome to the March 5, 2014 Board of Education meeting. We were in executive session starting at 6 o'clock to discuss confidential personnel matter. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everybody, we are being videotaped. It is played at 6:00 PM on Sunday evenings on the cable network. Also, any participation in government students here? A few of you? Good. If we go beyond 9:00, we'll stop at 9:00 and take a break and you can come in, come up and sign out. Sign out sheets you have to sign in order to get credit. And if you have a piece of paper that any of the board members needs to sign, we'll sign that for you. If we get done before 9, you'll be able to leave at that point. So, we'll start introductions.
Lynn Lenhart.
Joanne Cunningham.
Kate Navarro.
Jody Monroe.
Tom Douglas.
Matt Downey.
Michael Cooper.
Diane Stever.
Charmaine Woodgesinger.
And Judy Kehoe.
The item number two, approval of the minutes, the minutes of the February 26, 2014 regular board meeting. Do I have a motion?
No.
Second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item number three, Student Senate report. We have a representative from the Student Senate here? No? Okay.
It's sort of the first week of sports season, so a lot of practices inside right now.
Next, Superintendent's report.
Thank you.
No Superintendent? Okay, we can move on now.
Thank you, President Downey. It's my pleasure to report that over this past weekend, I had the opportunity to attend several nice activities that honor Bethlehem Central. But the first and foremost all-day event was at Odyssey of the Mines. It was hosted up at Shindahoa High School. And we had six teams competing at various projects for Odyssey of the Mines. And I'm happy to report for the first time ever, all teams that attended to compete at Odyssey of the Mines also took home a medal. We had three first-place teams. Two of them came from Helmagrel Elementary, as well as one team that took first place came from Bethlehem Central Middle School. These three teams will go on and compete at the state-level competition on April 12 at Binghamton University. So, we want to congratulate all the students in their participation. And we'll bring them out to the board as we did last year, probably more around the night of instruction, as we're trying to make our presentations align with the specific budgetary presentation for the evening. In addition, it is my honor to be notified that the B.C. students, and we had seven in total, the highest in the Capital Area, all advanced to the National Merit Scholarship Finals. So, all of our students of these seven were identified as semifinalists, and it's not easy to go beyond that. But our students, and all seven of them, were labeled as finalists in the scholarship program. And I'm going to try, because this is the first time I've saw all of their names. James Berea, Julia Champagne, Elizabeth Coltrera, Catherine Colagiesek, I think, Max Rosenberg, Seth Schoenhaus, Ari Shi, were the finalists. And they will now compete for 8,000 National Merit Scholarships worth about $35 million. We want to congratulate each of these students, as well as we'll bring them out on, I believe it's April 2 to honor them as well. So...
Are any of them here tonight?
Any here tonight?
Elizabeth.
Aria.
Aria and Elizabeth, so...
We wish you well on the competitions, and hopefully you get all that you can get, because I know a college education is not easy these days, especially paying for it. I also had the opportunity to attend on Saturday night the Glenmont Gold Gala, although it was for a short time, because I had to go back into the city for some meeting for the statewide Superintendent's Conference. But the gala was attended by over 100 individuals from the Glenmont community and supporters, as well as the special sponsor for the evening CSX Railways, as they were the major donor for this gala. The evening netted, I think, over $8,000 in fundraising ability just from the evening, along with the sponsorship, I believe of an additional $10,000 or 15?
That's your total.
Yeah, from CSX. So, we want to thank them as they gear up for, hopefully, our state-approved project in the very near future for the playgrounds at three of our elementary schools. So, as I mentioned, it was our Winter Institute and Lobby Day for the statewide Superintendent's Group over the past weekend. And we heard several items from many of our Senators and Assembly people. One of the issues is obviously education. We are looking forward to that, and we'd ask everybody, now is the time to make sure that they contact their legislators, to make sure that they understand our gap elimination needs to go away. We need it eliminated, and we can do exactly what they're saying with keeping taxes low, as well as maintaining positive educational programs across the state. In addition, just so people know that, you know, we've started our spring sports season. We are trapped inside at this point still with the weather, so please be careful when you're going throughout the halls, because you never know where the track team is, or the lacrosse team, or every other individual that's trying to get their mandatory practices in. We also have, this weekend is the New York State School Boards Association Capitol Conference. I know, I'll let Lynn talk about that a little bit more. But we will have meetings for the Board and anyone within the school community that would contact us. Meetings are set up with Senator Breslin at 11:00 on Monday, Assemblywoman Fahey at 11:30, and then Senator Kaczuk at 12:00 at the Legislative Office Buildings. I know currently I'm attending, I know Lynn is attending, but she has many commitments in her duties with other leadership. I know Dr. Woodgesinger, Mr. Downey, and Mr. Cooper are. If anybody else is able to free up that time now that we have all of them confirmed, if you could please contact Brittany. And at this point, I would like to thank everybody for their patience as we go through. The budget process is long and tedious, but we're trying to make it very succinct and informative. So, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Douglas. Next, Board of Education report?
I'll just mention the Bethlehem Central Community Foundation, the Wacky Olympics and basketball game on Friday night. I mean, it was really great. And I don't think they finalized the amount of money that was raised for the scholarship fund and for innovative grants for teachers. But it was remarkable, number one, the attendance from each school, the participation of the staff on the teams, and that, you know, competitive spirit among everyone. I'm sure there were probably some sore people on Saturday morning after doing some of those wacky Olympics. But I was really impressed by the numbers and by the spirit and the support. I'm sure the Foundation was very pleased, too, with the results of the evening.
Yeah, I would add to that. I think the school spirit was phenomenal. I think it's an event where you have all the schools there, all the elementaries, all the middle school and the high school. I mean, you sometimes go to an event at a particular elementary school or at the middle school or high school. With this, you saw everybody, you know, working together and supportive as a community. It was great to really see. The kids were very enthusiastic.
I read a book, I read "The Smartest Kids in the World and How They Got There", this weekend, which I think is a must-read for anyone involved in education. It is written by Amanda Ripley, who is a journalist for Time Magazine and New York Times, who is not a writer of education, who became fascinated by the graphs on the international tests on how the U.S. has stayed flat since the late 1990s, where other countries have taken huge upswings and far past us. And when you accounted for poverty and immigrants and things, they still crushed us on these tests. And so, she sent, well, she didn't send, but she followed three exchange students that went into three of the highest-ranking countries in the world, which were Korea, Finland, and Poland, actually, and found out, spoke with their education ministers, went that way, but also put the kids in the schools, and went in and asked the kids, and did surveys with kids that came to the U.S., did surveys that came to the kids that went there, and really, from a true research and protocols, looked at all of these numbers and asked what they were doing. Now, nobody really likes the Korean system, which is absolutely crazy, what they do. But the Finnish system and the Polish system had a lot to like, honestly. And the whole idea was increasing the rigor and how did you do it in the schools. And then it does give anecdotes on the Success Academy, which got a lot of press yesterday, in New York City, that took their charter schools. And in the first one that opened up for low-income kids in New York City, had 100% pass rate on the science test and 95 at the highest level percent. And it's a low-income disadvantaged school, for the most part. They also set up a second one in Harlem that far surpassed the gifted and talented schools of the affluent communities in Manhattan. And you start to look at some of their theories and what they're saying and what they're doing, and the rigor is there. There's no question about it, all the way up from who they hire, where they go to school, how they get in. I mean, the whole system just kind of gets rocked from the core. And they made massive changes in small amounts of time. And it's interesting with the kids, just asking questions back and forth, you know. "Why, why do you guys care so much about school?" was what the one girl asked in Finland. And the Finnish student said, "We don't understand why you guys don't." And so, it's very provocative and those kind of things. And, you know, a couple teachers saying, you know, "I gave you an F." Well, the kid's coming back and crying, the parents, and "Why did I get, why did you give me an F?" And the answers are flat out, "I didn't give you an F. You deserve an F. You earned an F. If you want to deserve a C, you need to work." And the kid went home and the kid worked, and the kid got a D the next trimester. And the kid wasn't happy with that, and the kid went up. And that's the whole motivating factor, you know, of it. And it was also interesting, one, because we're talking about the grading thing today, which is funny, if you read that, you would change everything. And then, two, the technology budget, too, which we're not really talking about. But these schools do not use technology in the schools, virtually at all. And they don't believe in the smart boards, and they don't believe in the computers. And you're talking Korea, China, Japan, who obviously have the capabilities. And they are going back to the basics, and they are learning it far better than the American kids are. And it's an easy read. I mean, I read it in two days, but it's fascinating. And I honestly think, you know, whether you like it, or whether you don't, or whether you agree, or whether you don't, I think it's something everybody should read, honestly. I think it's great.
What was the auditorium name again?
Amanda Ripley.
Amanda Ripley. Thank you.
I was able to go to the, I would call them young women's basketball sectionals on, I think it was Thursday night, you were there. And just want to commend the athletes for their effort and their play, commend the community for the support, and commend the Bethlehem students who showed up, because they were on one side of the auditorium and the Albany students were on the other side, calling back and forth. But everything stayed civil, but very enthusiastic, so...
And also, on Saturday, I attended the Lab School Brooks Barbecue, which was excellent. And again, another whole community spirit of, you know, you could either do takeout or dine-in, and they had entertainment and a silent auction to raise funds and whatnot in big sale, so...
Yeah, you must have been there before I was. We had to wait online, because I think they had basically stopped cooking. And then, all these people showed up, including us, and they had to continue on. And so, I think they were very successful also. So, I was happy to see the support there, too. And just with the Capitol Conference this weekend, I believe it starts at 2:00 on Sunday. And I'm not sure of the exact order of doing things, but we'll be honoring two local legislators as freshman legislators for their efforts in the, you know, in terms of education issues. You know, both Pat Fahey and C.C. Kaczuk are both going to receive an award for this before their efforts. And often, they go against their leadership, you know, whether it's the governor or, you know, in their particular houses, you know, to support educational issues. You know, it turns out that they're both former Board of Education members. But obviously, they haven't forgotten what, you know, the issues that face public schools in their communities. So, if you're planning on coming Sunday, you know, try and come for that 2:00 start, because I think it'll be close to the beginning there that we'll be doing that.
Okay. It's not going to be during the evening session of dinner?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure, the exact timing of it.
All right, okay.
I'll, once I know...
Yeah, because I know I won't be there till probably about 3:00 or so, but, yeah.
Okay.
If you can get that and clarify it in Friday's update for everybody.
Right, I'll try...
Yeah.
All right, moving on. Next, item number six is our presentation. We have two this evening. First presentation is of the proposed 2014-15 technology budget by Dr. Sal DeAngelo.
I'm not Dr. Sal DeAngelo, but that's okay. One of the things, as we start off the presentation, we like to give a little recap. We're trying to do it a little different from the past couple of years. We're not going into too great of the recap, because we put everything online. We also broadcast, I think, on channel, is it channel 112 now?
I think it's 116-2.
Yeah, it's in the digital world now, for the cable system, but it's 6:00 to 8:00 on Sunday, if you'd like to relive the event all over again. So, what we wanted to do is, tonight is sort of our second presentation for the budget development. Okay, Sal. There we go. It's the era. Totally different. Tonight's agenda, we're going to review the preliminary budget gap. And that's what we started with last year, I mean, last week. We also will review the baseline expenditures and revenues. We'll look at the maximum tax levy limit, just so that we can make sure everyone understands that where the calculated cap is, so that they understand whether we are at the allowable levy limit proposed by the governor, that he says school districts should be moving forward with. We will be looking at any reductions identified to date as we build our budget. And then, we will be moving into follow-up from last week's discussion, because it's only been a week, about bus replacement. And we'll need some further direction at the end from the Board with final discussions on that. And then, we'll move into our Special Education and Student Service presentation by Ms. Johnston. And after her presentation, we'll go into Educational Informative Technology Service Budget by Dr. DeAngelo. And then, we'll wrap up sort of with any decisions to be considered for the coming weeks, as well as our future meetings. So, as you look back to last week, one of the things that we talked about is, we are trying to look at from budget line, from one year to budget line to the next year, if we did absolutely nothing to the budget, except for rising costs and carrying costs from one year to the next, we have budget expenses that would total $93.435 million. Our baseline revenue from budget year to budget year, according to our best estimated calculations of aid received through the governor's proposal at this time, totals roughly $88.5 million. Thus, the preliminary gap, the true gap for the district to cover its expenditures, if nothing's added and nothing subtracted, is about $4.8 million. Now, the biggest question is, how are we going to cover that gap? And that gap is represented by the slide, is we really have roughly four tools to work with. We have our tax levy limit, and the tax levy that would ultimately be set as a projected tax levy, because that rate isn't set until August. We also have what additional aid we may receive from the state, because at this time, we know a certain number. We hope that it would never be less than that. We expect that it will most likely be more than what's been proposed. And then, we have any of our uses of our own financial reserves or fund balance as a tool to offset that gap. And then, last but certainly not least, and probably the least popular, is any potential expense reductions we may have to meet to do the one thing that we must do every year, is have a balanced budget. So, that's sort of the recap of where we are. Now, recapping the next piece is really our budget development. If you notice, our baseline budget and the figures up at the top are just what I reported. To date, from our transportation budget, we have identified that we have a potential reduction in our budget of about $25,000 for transportation vehicle and liability insurance. But we also have a potential addition in transportation for the snow removal machine, or I call the big yellow squeegee, for about $26,000, so almost a wash. I'm happy to report from the business office, and I know Judy can speak on it if there's any questions, but we've looked at some potential new revenue coming into the district now in the area of Medicaid revenue, Medicare Part D subsidy, as well as our rental of real property. And that is on the middle column in the tune of about $169,000. So, that overall changes what we started with, and changes our budget gap potentially by a little bit. And each week, this picture will be changing. So, we just want to make sure that people are aware of it. And then, also on the bottom is other possible revenue ranges, because until we have a past New York State budget and know how much, if any, additional state aid we're going to receive, we know potentially it would be between 0 and the full funding of $3.4 million of the gap elimination adjustment coming potentially back to the district. We just don't know the range yet. We'd prefer it to be the biggest number. That would help out very easily with our gap. However, we also have the tax levy. Depending on where the Board ultimately settles at the end, we understand that without challenging for the community to pass a budget at just a simple majority, we would have to propose a tax levy limit of 3.12 or lower for that 50%. And if the Board enacted an opportunity to go above it, we would have to have a supermajority, or 60% or more, for affirmation of the budget at the annual election. So, the one thing we haven't identified is use of fund balance. That is one of the things we've been cautioning. But we didn't want to put any assumption in there, because people truly need to understand the fiscal gap that we're facing. And the best part about it is, when I came here, it was at 7.7 million. We have taken strong strategic actions to move it down to a more manageable number. And I'd like to say, it's not as good, it's not as bad as we thought it could be this budget season. But it's not as good as it should be either. So, these are the tools that we have. And as we go through this, now we'll go through with the overview of the fund balance, and Ms. Kehoe will present and then hand off as we go through the presentation. So, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. At last week's meeting, I indicated that this would be the meeting where we would have the update for you on our fund balance and our projection for the coming year. This represents the actual fund balance levels that we have in place as of the last completed fiscal year, on June 30, 2013, with two years of comparative numbers for your reference. Our total fund balance was just under $9.3 million. The majority of that is comprised of restricted components of that fund balance. The number that we tend to focus in on is the amount of the undesignedated unrestricted portion of the fund balance. And that's the one that we're closely regulated on, where we need to keep that below 4% of the subsequent year's appropriations. And you can see, we were at 3.71% last year, at 3.358. One of the restricted elements within that fund balance is the line that's marked as the $1,750,000, which is the amount that's earmarked to be used in the coming year's budget. So, in the budget that was adopted for 1314, that $1,750,000 was the amount to be drawn upon if we exactly hit all of our revenues and all of our expenditures as it was part of the adopted budget. So, because that is a crystal ball, and of course, now we come into the actual numbers, I update that regularly as we go throughout the year, where we're looking at the actual revenues and any changes that may become part of our operations as, when reality occurs during the course of the year. Our revenues right now, I'm projecting, are going to be coming in at about $88.2 million, so a little bit below our actual budgeted revenues, but not shockingly lower or anything too difficult to manage. On the expenditure side, where we had budgeted $90.4 million, I'm predicting a range of between 87.7 up to 88.2. With that range of numbers, that means that we would be coming in close to a break-even. There are, of course, hopefully no more major snow events. We've been dealing with snow, cold, and a variety of other impacts in this current year. Once we get through that, and as we get into another month or so, I'll be able to fine-tune that. The zero break-even amount would be based on the encumbrances that we have in place in the budget now, representing all of the departmental anticipated expenditures. As we get closer to the end of the year, some of those will become liquidated. So, that's where that range comes in. We just don't know exactly what will be required. But the good news and the bottom line for the Board and the community to be aware of is that $1,750,000 that we provided for within the budget does not look like we will need that. Because fund balance is a finite resource, because we're not going to use it in the 1314 school year, we will have that available to be drawn upon in the development of the 1415 budget. So, we'll continue to monitor and update those numbers. We, of course, will eagerly await the finalization of the state budget, and then that will hopefully make up the majority of the efforts that we'll need in order to close the gap. Last week, when Mr. Karam and I had done the presentations, we had made the case for replacement of a number of our buses. This is based on an evaluation of the fleet, of turning over a small portion of the total fleet each year, so that we can be at that ideal spot where the cost to maintain the buses isn't surpassing the value of the buses. So, the recommendation was for eight large buses at a cost not to exceed $879,000. And although you can make a decision tonight, you absolutely need to make a decision by the March 19 meeting, because the legal ad that has to be published within 45 days of the budget vote needs to have that amount specified. Mr. Karam is here with us tonight, in case you have any really tough questions about the buses. But I wanted to open that up for either discussion, comments, or consensus.
I do have a question on the bus replacement. I mean, in the past, you've always said that, you know, I believe there are five-year bonding.
Yes.
And so, would the amount rolling off this fifth year from stuff bought five years ago, would it be just about this, what we would be incurring going forward on this new purchase?
Yes. And that was one of the items that we had talked about last week, because we try to even out that debt service, so that we don't have fluctuations. So, we're limited to no more than five years, because that's the period of probable usefulness on the buses. So, as the older purchases are coming off, given that this is close to the same amount, it would be very level. It's not going to be affecting the 1415 budget. It'll be hitting in the following year's budget due to the timing of those payments.
But again, I guess the amount that is coming off of being paid off
Yes.
is about the same, you're saying?
Yes.
So, it's really not a, not a really increase. It's continuing a...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. But remember that we are required by law. Any capital expenditures do require voter approval, which is why it's before you.
I have a question. As I recall, there was a graph last week that talked about the number of buses that should, or the maximum number, or the preferred number, and that the eight is actually fewer than the, can you refresh our memory on how many, the difference between the eight and the...
It was 10.
Yes, it was 10 buses, which would be the, what we'll call the ideal number of buses to be replaced. But the eight is, it was six the year before. The eight is kind of a way of transitioning us back up to the number that is fully recommended?
In other words, if I can refresh, for three years prior, the district's been purchasing six buses, when they should have been purchasing recommended, somewhere around 10 to 12. Now...
Now, what's happened is our bus fleet is starting to age greater and greater. Keeping that 10 as that ideal at this point with a 12-year repurchasing plan for our entire fleet, we're moving from a recommendation of continuing that six per year up to eight because we've really been three years, almost 12 buses lower than what we needed to replace. So, we're trying to fudge it in the middle as we can't keep this up. It's sort of the same thing with equipment. Over time, you just don't have the ability. You start to have to purchase the things that you need.
Yeah, transition to catch up, basically.
Before we leave, I'm not sure, are we going to take any action on this tonight, or are we going to wait?
I think, I think we have until the next meeting, too.
So, that's your preference? That's fine.
I don't believe it was an item on the agenda.
But, in order for us to put it on the agenda, we need to have sort of the board's consensus. We're planning on recommending eight. Is there any further discussion in regards to the number? Because that's what we've set our resolution at.
Yeah, I thought it was...
Okay.
I don't see why we can't just agree to do it tonight.
Do it tonight? What, they have the resolution set?
Well, we'll prepare the resolution. That way, it's on paper. We'll still meet the timeline and everything. We just wanted to make sure the board understood before we set the resolution.
Oh, okay.
So, we'll prepare a resolution for eight buses, a total of 879.
879, not to exceed.
For the 19th meeting. Any other questions for Al, because I know he gave up some time tonight?
Well, not necessarily for Mr. Karam, but while we're on transportation, for a future meeting before we adopt a budget, could you tell us how much it would cost for a .5 and a 1.0 mechanic supervisor position? Not proposing that be added back in or whatever, I just want to know what the numbers are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. At this point, we're going to move forward to special education services, and our director Cathy Johnston will present that.
And I'll just switch seats, we can get this to... Oh, good. Move that down. Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm here to present the budget for what we call SES, the Special Education and Student Services Department. So, before I get into the actual budget numbers, I wanted to just go over a few other numbers that are really important to understand our department. So, we're going to review the numbers of students that are identified, the locations where we're servicing those students, and then the programs that we're, that are being offered to those students. Oh, I forgot to hit that. Okay. So, this slide is showing the number of students identified in two different ways. So, there's the bar chart at the top and then the graph, you know, the other kind of chart at the bottom. What I really wanted folks to understand is, we're servicing roughly around 700 students for the entire district. We service students in all seven of the buildings that we have here on campus. We're responsible to service our preschool population. So even though we don't have a preschool program in district, students come through committee in district, and then we service them within our community. We service students that we call are out of, out of district students. We currently have over 30 students that are attending a school outside of the district, and they've been placed there by the Committee on Special Education. So, it's been determined through evaluations and lots of work that those students' needs cannot be met by any of the programs here in Bethlehem. And then the last group that we are responsible for are the students that are parentally placed. So, parents may choose to place their students in a private school, let's say a Don Stewart or Albany Academy. They might have special education needs and we're responsible for providing the special education need, not the cost of the school itself. This chart is another thing that I talk to the board about on a fairly regular basis. This represents our continuum of services. And this is a pretty important piece to understand, the whole budget component in our department. So, the, the arrow on the bottom, you can see that there's boxes in there. If you look at that continuum from left to right, the left-hand side is the least restrictive, and the right-hand side, all the way almost coming off the arrow, is the most restrictive. So, when you talk about students receiving services, over to the left, related services, we could have a student in a regular education class, maybe getting speech therapy twice a week. That's as, that's the least restrictive. And when you talk about budget, that's also the program that would be the least costly, if you will. Moving towards the end of the arrow, we have students that receive a co-teach program at the elementary level, which is a direct consultant teacher at the secondary level. That program is a bit more restrictive and also more costly because there's a special education teacher involved for a good portion of the student's day. We continue on with skills classes and intensive skills classes that we have here in district. Here at the high school, we have something called a LEED program. Again, those are much more restrictive, self-contained programs, and also the cost of those go up. And then finally, we have those out-of-district placements. On the top of this slide, we put just average costs. That's from SED data from 1011. That was the last data we could pull. And you'll see that an average special ed program in Bethlehem is about $31,000, and there's comparisons in there. But again, really important to notice, in comparing the costs with that chart down below, we could have a student whose program is costing $5,000 in district, up to well over $100,000 in district, depending on their needs. And out of district, the cost can be even higher. So, the CSE, and I thank them all for being here tonight from our department, look at evaluation information and place students very carefully. So, having said that, I'm going to get into the budget part of it. This first slide is reviewing the expenditures by department. Our department, if you will, has about four departments built inside of it. So, the special education component is obviously the largest part. That includes our teaching staff-related services, and that's the biggest part of our budget at $9,650,000. We also are responsible for the health services for the entire district, and you'll see the cost there. Our psychological services for the district, as well as our social work services. So, the entire budget for the SES department is $11,500,000. Also important for folks to know that both the health services and the social work services are departments that are used by the entire district, not just special education, but they do fall under our department. So, this next slide, I wanted to take what we were just looking at previously and kind of break it out into types. Salaries are at the top of that list, and of course, that's the largest component of our budget, at $8,460,000. The second line on the slide is tuition paid to other schools. So, if you remember what I referenced earlier, that we have well over 30 students out in schools outside of Bethlehem, and those are the tuitions that we pay to those schools. So, those are schools like the CP Center, Wildwood Schools. So, so private schools that are servicing students with greater needs than we can provide here. The third line is BOSI services. And we contract with Capregion BOSIs. We have, we have a number of students that are placed in those BOSI's programs. But also important to note under there, there's other contracted services through BOSIs. For example, teachers of visually impaired or teacher of the hearing impaired. So, that, that cost represents what we're paying out to BOSIs. The final line on there is other operating costs and supplies, and that supplies for our entire department, testing materials and contractual work. We often have to bring in some outside providers to assist us. So again, that bottom line is equivalent to the one on the slide before. I'm sorry, Matt.
Question on the tuition paid to other schools. That increase, is that due to cost increases of currently placed students? Or is there an anticipation that there may be additional students placed?
It, it's a combination of both of those, Matt. So, we've had, one of the things that I was going to talk about in a little bit more detail later is, we often have a student that might need to be placed somewhere mid-year.
Yeah.
And then when we go to do the budget for the following year, we don't just have that small portion, as we did in this year, that I might have been able to cover by moving things within the budget. We have the full cost of it. So, that happened in both the schools outside of the district, as well as BOSIs.
Okay.
Cathy, before we go any further, could you talk a little bit more about the parentally placed students?
Absolutely.
Specifically, how much, say, we have in the placement and the cost of the program?
Sure. Mike, I'm not sure if you were here a couple of years ago when this whole system changed a little bit. But, we now talk about, so if a student is, their parents place them, let's say at Albany Academy or Don Stewart, and they, they might have started here in Bethlehem and had been receiving services. They might get evaluated when they're at that school. But, we talk about district of location and district of residence. So, we are the district of residence, ultimately responsible for the cost. And the district where the private school is located, so Don Stewart would be in Rensselaer, is responsible for the CSE portion, and then they bill us back. They do the CSE, just like we do the CSE, for any students that parents might place at St. Thomas School, even though they're not Bethlehem students. So, it can be a little complicated. In the parentally placed schools, or the, you know, those private schools, there's not a full continuum like I showed you that we have here in Bethlehem. If students are needing more involved programs, they're usually referred back to their home district. So, does that answer your question?
If you could go back just one slide, I might borrow your mic.
This one?
Yes, could you tell us, no, the one that talked about the, the five departments?
The four?
The four. Yes, four. Health services of the nurses?
Yes.
Okay. And could you tell us a bit about, what does psychological services entail? What does it mean?
We have seven or eight, I have it on the slide? Eight? Seven or eight? School psychologists? Seven, sorry. Eight social workers, then. That are involved in, for the district. They do evaluations on students. We have to have a full psychoed in order to identify a student with, for special education services. And those evaluations need to be done every three years. So, they're involved in evaluations. Some of the psychologists help with counseling services, with behavioral support. And more recently, our elementary school psychologists are helping with the RTI process that Jody has spoken about before, so that response to intervention, and looking at data, and, and helping with some of that testing work that's done in the K8 buildings.
Now, I know that the social work staff, I believe, work with the general population as well as identified students. Is that true for the psychological service staff?
No, no, they're not.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Of course. The health services, on an earlier slide, I think Judy showed, we had a Medicaid revenue line. Is some of that cost offset by that Medicaid revenue that comes in?
The Medicaid revenue comes from, and Judy can speak to all of this, but, excuse my voice, in our department, if a student is Medicaid eligible
Right.
and they're receiving services, let's say speech therapy and occupational therapy, we can bill back Medicaid for that. We do that on a monthly basis. There's been a lot of training that's gone into that. But then when that money comes back, it goes into the general fund.
Right, right, right. But that's part of that, okay.
Correct. Okay? Whoops. Okay, so this is, these next two slides represent, when you were asking a few questions before, the salaries and the, and the staff that we have in the special education department. So, you know, if I run through these, we have 37 special education teachers district-wide. We have 12 speech pathologists, 94 aides to students with disabilities. There is myself and three CSE chairs. There's an asterisk up there because .6 of one of the CSE chairs comes through our federal grant. So, that's a part of the salary. We have four occupational therapists and two physical therapists, and then six clerical staff in our office. So, that's the salary amounts for that group. And it continues on the next page, next slide, I should say. Currently, we have 12 nurses for the district. And again, you'll see the asterisks because we pay for one of those through the federal grant. We have, the next line is the clerical in the nurses' office. For many years now, we've had one and a half clerical in the nurses' offices. And this year, we were able to increase that to two. And that's here at the high school. The one and a half, the halftime person increased to two. And that actually was due to a mid-year attrition. So, a staff person left and we were able to reallocate, actually, Mr. Landry helped with that, reallocate that staff person into the nurses' office to assist them. And then we moved that .5 from the high school budget into our budget. There's the seven psychologists that we referenced earlier, and the eight social workers. The last piece on there is substitutes extra help in overtime. Excuse me. So, substitutes are for when our staff are, you know, doing in-servicing. The extra help in overtime, you, you will see from the 1314 to the 1415 has increased a bit. We had been using our federal grant for a portion of that, about $5,000 worth. But on a recent audit, was told that we should not be using that. So, we've put it in the budget for next year, increasing it by $5,000. Or $4900, I should say.
Before we leave the salary position slides, could you go back one slide, please? And it says there are six clerical workers. Where are they, are they all located in the central office, or they's...
In the SES office.
Yes.
Yes. Responsible for, we do, you know, we sit at a CSE meeting, Committee on Special Education, and produce an IEP. If I'm saying any alphabet soup, which special ed has a lot of, just stop me, but produce an IEP or a 504 plan. And then that has to be processed. So, we have clerical staff doing that. We have a person doing our Medicaid billing, which is pretty significant, and regular purchasing, work with the grants, so.
Thank you.
Okay. So, that was the buzz, budget, excuse me, portion. This slide, I wanted to, I know in previous years, and I believe last week, the board had asked about the previous reductions that we've had and how they are impacting us. So, we were trying to represent some of that. Just in talking, as I've been out and about, there's been, we, as you recall, probably two years ago, we laid off a significant amount of aides to students with disabilities. And we are covering services for all of the students that have that service on their IEP. But, that's been one of our challenges because the schedule is quite tight. And middle school staff talked to me about this a bit. I, I believe this is a challenge in all of the buildings. But just in the middle school, we might have an aide to students with disabilities who's working in one program on one house for the first three periods of the day, and then running to a different house with a different team, seeing a student for one period, and then running back. And the challenge really is just the communication, being able to network and talk with, with folks. So, we have teachers who are traveling between buildings. And that's certainly not only a special ed concern, but for our regular ed colleagues as well. That just gets a little, you know, they can do it, but they kind of fly in and then maybe fly back out to another building. So, that's been a little bit of a challenge, as well as limited to no professional development just because of timelines and, and budget. So, wanted to review the proposed changes to the SES budget for 1415. As Dr. Douglas and Ms. Kehoe reviewed, you know, we're looking at a 4.8 million dollar gap. So, each of us was look, was asked in our department to look at any potential reduction that we could make. As we talked about earlier, our social workers, at all levels, are seeing... As we talked about earlier, our social workers, at all levels, are seeing both mandated students, meaning that that service is on their IEP, and non-mandated services. So when I look to what could we do at this point if we needed to have a reduction, it would be that non-mandated social work portion. The next line on that is some cost savings from staff retirements in our department. And then in addition, this was a piece that I wanted to review with the board. So we are, have a refinement in our BOSI services this year, that we're in right now, the thirteen fourteen school year. We've had an increase of seven students that are attending BOSI's programs. Two of those students moved into the district mid-year, and had been in a BOSI's program placed by their previous district. And when we have that happen, we go out, we, we visit the student, the program, look to see if we could provide those services in district, and in both of those cases, felt like we were not able to do that. The other students, two others moved as well, that were not in BOSI's, came to district, and we were unable to program for them. And then there were three other students that, throughout the course of this year, have, CSE has determined that that was a more appropriate placement. So we were able to take care of those costs this year, the thirteen fourteen, but will not be able to, because it'll be the full amount for fourteen fifteen. So that is that.
Kathy?
Questions?
Is BOSI's adable, so is this number reflecting that?
No, it's not, not the adable portion, right? She said, since BOSI's is adable, that's not reflecting the adable part, is it?
No.
No.
That's just your cost.
Just a general question on how you budget. How do you know, I mean, what assumptions can you make if this is a budget for next year, and if, let's say, some very disabled student enters the district, that maybe, you know, the hundred thousand dollar range? How do we, if that, you know, we have, we have to legally provide the services, how do we cover that?
Right. Well, if you look at what we did this year, you know, we go to our budget, we see where maybe we haven't spent money, and then we try to reallocate money. That's what we were able to do this year, knowing we were, you know, on a very thin line, and, and that was challenging. In previous years, Lynn, our department has had to come to the board and say, we don't, we don't have enough, and we need to do something. So we've been, we have been fortunate this year, and we've moved things, and then have not been able to do something perhaps we were planning on doing to make that work. You know, I, I have to say, I feel really fortunate with the, the team that I work with. We look at this really carefully. You know, whenever, take the, the two students who are in a BOSI's program placed by another district. It really is, is very different, because there could be a very small district somewhere that has no program, you know, very limited programming, and they would place a student in BOSI's, where we might have a program in district. So what we always do is say, the student can continue in their BOSI's program, and we'll do a review in six to eight weeks and see if we have something back in district. So, you know, it's, there is not an exact scientist, science to it. I mean, you're absolutely right, in a, in one year, I might have four students move out, and then there's extra money in there. And this year, we particularly had a lot of students move in, so we try our best.
That's one of the primary reasons why we want to be in a position that we understand our fund balance, because usually that's what a district would rely on in that unique situation. When we're dipping into the fund balance to sort of balance our budget, so to speak, that becomes precarious, and we have to be always aware of that.
Just a question on that, that addition of the ninety-five. So, I mean, this is to the, meet the needs of seven students that have come into the district? I mean, is it a negotiable kind of add, or is it kind of a required add that is needed to meet the needs of kind of the population?
The best I can say, and again, Joanne, I'm, you know, I could have by June, two people move out, and-
Right.
-the amount could be different. The way we did this was, we looked at the program the students in, the grade that they were in. For some, we are starting to go to annual review, for others, we're just getting feedback from the program. My staff goes out and visits every single one of those students, so gets a sense of how they're doing. Then you look at the grade they're in, okay? So they're, this year, we have two twelfth graders that will be graduating, so we know we don't have to have, worry about those costs, so we assume some of the new costs can go into there. We do a BOSI's commitment letter, where they tell us what their costs are going to be, what, what pieces are going up, and to the best of our ability, we predict what it's going to cost us, and then-
So you deal with what is known, and that ninety-five reflects what is known?
Correct.
Okay.
At this point.
Right.
As of March fifth.
Right.
The change is between now and April.
And from the BOSI side of it, most of the special ed students now, both districts have provided classes in their own districts within capital region BOSI's, but, you know, there are several students that are, you know, very severely handicapped, that need services, that, you know, in a more common area. You know, you might have one student like that, or two, or whatever.
Right.
So, so most of those students are-
Joanne, also important to note, just talking about the BOSI's, so I'm never sure how much everybody realizes, we have, you know, about sixteen students in BOSI's, none of them are the same. I mean, it's not like you could say, well, let's bring them back and make a class for them. They're, you know, elementary, middle school, high school, different diagnoses, different needs, and Lynn's right, they're just students that, one or two of this needed student, and we don't have a class for in district.
Before you walk up the numbers, I realize, and I should have caught this earlier and asked for it earlier, but if we could have it for the next presentation, just a summation, there's a net reduction there, but in the previous slides, if we look between thirteen fourteen and fourteen fifteen, each of those lines go up.
Correct.
And it's spending for next year. So I'd like to see a slide where it says, net increase, and then the net reduction. Does that make sense?
No.
No?
Not right now.
Okay. You don't, you don't know what I'm asking? See, go to a, go to the previous slide.
Do you want me to go back?
Yeah. The previous, I think, was what the budget would be rolled forward, with the costs known, and then this is what Kathy has projected to any, her change in it proposed.
Right, I know, I understand. But see, each of these lines, each of those slides, it says, for example, the, is there a total?
So, Charmaine, are you just looking to see then, based on what's in the baseline now?
Yes.
If all of these changes are in there, you want to see what those numbers would be after these changes are there?
No, but see, see where it says thirteen fourteen revised budget-
Right.
-by department? And then fourteen fifteen, so there's an increase between ten nine-
Yes.
-six six, yes, and eleven five five. And then the next slide has an increase, oh, it's by, by type.
It's the same, they're the same numbers.
Same table, just shown differently.
See, I think, I think she was just trying to show where she was trying to-
Right. So, so just tell me what, what, like, eleven-
It's like they're all separate.
So what she's proposing, I think, is the fourteen fifteen, this is a rolled-forward budget, and the last slide is, would be taken away from the budget.
Right.
If we made the cut in the addition, this number will go down by sixty-seven thousand.
No, 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 I understand that. So I basically want to know, what, eleven million, five twenty-seven, two seventy, subtract the ten million from that, so that, that's the, that's the overall net increase.
Oh, the change.
Yes, the change, the increase.
The dollar change.
And, I know, I get the net decrease, so I get that, because that's almost, that's sixty-seven thousand. I want to know what the net increases.
Is that a number person has it at?
Yeah, just someone to calculate. So I want, so next to the net decrease, I want to know what the net increases. Does that, does that make sense now? Yeah, okay.
Sixty-six.
Thank you.
And finally, we want, you know, when you go through budget and you look at reductions and challenges, I just wanted to remind everybody that we have a really strong special ed program, and our kids are doing really well. Sometimes that gets lost in, in these kinds of presentations, so, you know, our graduation rate last year for our students with disabilities was eighty-two point-two percent. We have kids winning competitions, we've had two students this year win Braille challenges. We have students who are really succeeding in both academic sports and some social events, so I, I didn't want that to get lost in the whole piece of it, so.
Do you know how that graduation rate compares with other schools in the suburban council or in gen, or like districts?
I didn't do that when I calculated it, but I'd be happy to do that for you.
Thank you, though.
I actually looked on a few websites the other day to see if I saw that separated out, and I didn't, but I can, I can get some info for you. Okay? Should I introduce Dr. D'Angelo? You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone, Board of Education and community members. It's my pleasure to propose the two thousand fourteen fifteen educational and information technology services budget. Before I get to the numbers, I'd just like to point out some selected service highlights from this past year. Of particular note, we've spent quite a bit of time over the course of the two thousand twelve thirteen year, taking a look at an evaluation of a new student information system, and we're happy to report that a decision's been made, and we've entered into a contract, and we're excited in the next school year to be moving in that direction. Also, of particular note, bottom right-hand corner, we've serviced about thirty-five-hundred service requests in the previous year, and this year, we're on course for well over four thousand, so we're very pleased with that number. And the department handles both instructional and administrative IT needs, and this is the budget that's related to that. And as you can see, the salaries, equipment, purchase services, BOSI's. In regard to the salaries, as you've seen in many of the other presentations, we are non-instructionally based, so those salaries reflect the newest adopted BCUA contract and the increases that correspond to that contract. For most of the other budget lines, we're pretty flat, equipment, software, slight uptick in materials related to printing supplies, and other consumables that we use to support the technology program here. Purchase services, that would be our new student information system, contracted ser, contracted services, repairs, just again, reflecting some of the trending of some of our older equipment and the maintenance required to keep that in good serviceable condition. And then our BOSI's contract there, you'll have things like hosted email, instructional programs like Linkit and Novanet, and the wide-area network that BOSI's maintains between all of our buildings as internet service. Those are some of the things that are covered under the BOSI's budget. So, budget to budget, you'll see that the two million, thirty-three thousand dollar number, if you did the calculation, is up about one point-three percent from last year to this year. So a modest increase noted there. One of the things that, when I, I've been here now for four years, and one of the things that we accomplished when I first came here was a, was a slight realignment of the technology positions within the department. At that time, not, the positions were not civil service-related, and we did a, an analysis, and we worked hard to make sure that all of our non-instructional staff were covered by established civil service titles. We knew then that that wasn't going to be the only reorganization that was needed as we moved forward, and the technology needs and support needs changed, changed within the district. I'm back in front of you tonight to say that I think we need to take another look at that and propose some changes. The changes are predominantly related to the increase in skillset education and the complexity of the network and equipment that we're now servicing as opposed to a few years ago. When I first took over the department, one of the objectives was to become a more centrally-supported department, as opposed to a lot of the, what you'd call sneaker net support we were doing back then, sending a lot of technicians to the locations within the buildings to support our technology. We tried to bring that back, leveraging new technology, so we could do that remotely, more efficiently, more effectively. We continued to do that, so we continued to take more of a systems approach in our, in our support strategy. So I want to kind of go over where we are and where we'd like to be. We currently have a chief information officer, new to the district in October, that's working out very well, no change there. We already have a senior network and systems technician that handles our network administration. I would like to add a second senior network and systems technician's position. It would theoretically be an upgrade to an existing position, and that would cost us approximately nine thousand dollars. So we would have, when we're done, the two columns, if you're following this, is the current FTEs, and then the proposed FTEs, and then we'll talk about the total change. We currently have a network and systems technician. That potential promotion in the previous title would now become a vacancy. I'd like to fill that vacancy with a full-time school district employee. And in, in turn, I'm recommending that we reduce a current commitment that we have with the capital region BOSI's of a point-four individual. That point-four individual typically supports our elementary schools two days a week. As you can imagine, with five elementary schools, two days a week doesn't go a long way, and I don't feel we're providing the adequate support that we need for the elementary schools to be successful with the use of instructional technology. So I'd like to make that a full-time network and systems technician, and that be a district employee. The other benefit there is just consistency, relationships that they develop with the teachers and the principals, and on an ongoing basis, when something happens, hopefully it doesn't happen on a Friday when someone's not here, we can more consistently support that instructional level. Database support, database and student information system support, who reports to the chief information officer, no change there. The second new position I'd like to propose is an IT services specialist position. As we took a look at some of the civil service titles that were available, we feel that this would be a nice complement to the positions that we currently have. Right now, we have two help desk technicians. The one individual who's doing that help desk technician job is really doing the work of an IT support specialist job. That job has started to evolve over the years, and to address the greater needs that we have in this, as I mentioned, the systems area, we really need to take, take a look at that position, and recommending that we create that new position. In doing so, we in turn recommend that we eliminate one of the two help desk positions. And then the, next two positions, no change. We have a computer technician, and we have the procurement and support specialist position. So, just kind of a recap, we currently have eight point-four FTEs in the department, with the addition of the new network systems technician, but the subtraction of the point-four to BOSI's, we'd be making it a total of nine, and the net impact on the budget, if you will, would be about thirty thousand dollars for next year. And then a couple other, and this is how short the presentation is, the couple other changes that we wanted to make note of, and Dr. Douglas has spoken to this on many occasions, is our need to continue to build our capacity to be ready for online testing. Now, there's been a slight reprieve from the state on when that will actually take effect. However, we don't want to get there all at once. And last year, we built the beginnings of that scaffolding to build that capacity for online testing. And I'd remind you that online testing isn't necessarily just to meet the state requirement or the park requirements, but we'd like to do more online assessments within the classrooms, formative assessments, that help teachers make better instructional decisions. So building that capacity, regardless of it, whether it's a mandate by the state or not, is not a bad idea. The other, the other thing with all the new technology that we anticipate implementing this summer, I've asked that we have a modest increase in our summer help and extra help line. That has been tremendously useful. I know you're well aware of our student help desk initiative. On, on the previous slide, you'll see that this year, they're on pace to handle about eight hundred of those forty-five-hundred tickets. Again, a program that has far exceeded our expectations, and we're, we're receiving tremendous gains from that. If you remember the baseline presentation a couple of weeks ago, we have other districts who've visited us, looking at that, at that program as a model, and as a startup in their own district, so that's gotten a lot of attention. But we, and so what I wanted to mention in regard to the extra summer help and overtime, is now we're taking some of those students who we're seeing, let's say, the fifteen or sixteen students who are demonstrating exceptional skills, we are now approaching them to be part of our summer help. And so we, we have, it's almost like an inter, a year-long interview, and then we can leverage those students who will be a good fit. So I'm, I'm asking that we consider a modest increase in that line as well. So now we'll entertain some questions.
So I thought we included in that bond issue money for the equipment-
No, if you remember-
-to do online testing.
If you remember, the bond, with the exception of the elementary LCD projectors, had no focus on instructional hardware. It was focused on infrastructure. So wireless network, switches, core network, the bond predominantly, the one point-two, one point-three million dollars, with the exception of the elementary LCD projectors at about a hundred seventy-five, did not include any equipment.
Okay.
Yes, Joanne?
Thank you.
I didn't see, and maybe this was funded in a different way or whatnot, but any addition for that new student management?
Since that student management system-
Yeah.
Since we're engaging in a contract in the two thousand-
Oh, okay.
2013-14 year, where it says Technology and Purchase Services, the expenses related to that system are already included in this year's budget and will be included in next year's budget, so you're not seeing an additional. And we had planned for that during last year's budget cycle as well.
Got it. And can you just remind me, what was the rollout schedule of that?
The, the go-live is, what we call System Go-Live is July 11. The administrative teacher go-live, meaning the system becomes available, will be somewhere around August 11th. And the true go-live is the opening day of school. And I will be happy to give the board an update in the next month or so on an entire implementation plan that we're in the process developing as well as a online implementation wiki that helps our teachers understand where they are as far as a timeline, training opportunities, and really a comprehensive location for all of the details related to that implementation.
Right, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
And if, if I can add just real quick, we want everyone to know that with the go-live of the product, which is known as Aspen, we haven't given it a name, we will be sort of running in conjunction with some BC at home at first because we have to think about the parent component and training, as well as we will not necessarily open up the parent portal immediately at the start of the school year. Our teachers and our staff are going to need time to acclimate themselves to the program as well. So these will be things that will be posted as, I've had the committee that did the initial screening of it, we're going to reenact that committee for the potential timeline implementation over the next three to five years.
Right.
Great.
Sounds great. Is there a smartphone app for it?
There is.
Oh, good.
For teachers and students.
That's awesome.
Yeah, a nice mobile app that goes along with it.
Will you be doing a presentation to the board when you're fairly far along on developing this?
I would be happy to do an ongoing update and at some point when Dr. Douglas-
Probably around July, the July board meeting would be the best time.
That'd be great.
And we can do a little, I'll, I can forward you in advance a few video, links to video clips that will give you an overview of the product, but we certainly can do a live demonstration in what we call a sandbox that we've been given so that we can do some training. Any other questions? Thank you again.
Thank you, everybody, for your presentations and the work that you've done to put together our presentation tonight as well as the many refinements that we make throughout the week. Just so that the board knows as well as the community knows, we have several future meetings on the budget. They all correspond with our board meetings, but our next one is March 19th and that will be the presentation of the Operation and Maintenance Budget as well as a presentation by our new Athletic Director for the Athletics Budget. Our final major presentation will be on April 2nd by our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Jody Monroe, on the K through 12 instructional component. And then there will be a time that we're hoping that the budget at New York State is complete, that we will pull all of this work together. April 8th will be a meeting date for the board for budget discussion, budget decisions or any direction that we need, followed up with at any time between the 8th to the final date of April 22nd that the board may adopt potential budget to go forward at the district's annual election, which is scheduled for May 20th. It's just a reminder to the audience as well as our community in general, that applications for three board seats are available in the district office. For those prospective candidates, please, you have to come in in person and take out a petition with the district clerk, Ms. Brittany Barrett. And that pretty much concludes our presentation unless there's any further questions or anything that I've omitted.
Just to emphasize that the 8th is actually a Tuesday for folks.
Oh, yes. The April 8th is a Tuesday for that board meeting in the evening, as well as the 22nd because that is the requirement to get the information published in time according to the New York State regulations. And I did leave out, May 7th is the mandatory public hearing on the proposed budget that has been adopted. It is at that point that we open for comments on the budget that the board has selected, but nothing changes at that point and I think sometimes people forget that, so I'd rather put that out there now.
Any questions?
Thank you, everybody. At this point, at this time, the board would recognize any visitors who have something to say about a particular agenda item. Is anyone? Right, or, or on the presentations, which is an agenda item. No? Okay. We'll move on to item number eight. Finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action, item A. That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item number nine, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff action items A through E.
Can I just ask a question?
That's a first and a second. Okay. Any, any discussion?
Just a question, with the addition of the one that was added later, and you can let me know if I overstep in the, oh, okay. Just want, and that's terrific, I'm very glad, and I know that was kind of a pressure point for our new AD who had to deal with that vacancy so early in the season. I assume now there's kind of a ripple effect at the modified level and that is now probably commanding your priority attention and I hope that gets resolved soon, but great, great solution. She's wonderful.
We, we are in anticipated posting pending the appointment here because you can't resign something until you're appointed. But we have posted that, you will most likely see that appointment at the March 19th. At this point, that's all we can do because we're obligated to go through the posting.
Right, is there a plan for kind of the interim because modified starts Monday as well as other sports? I just wonder, I assume there's some sort of plan.
Well, what we don't want to do is cover the varsity coaches as well as our big student teacher in physical education department who has a very substantial cross background. Person who's looking at that position, looks to monitor, will not attract the students, hopefully get the idea of going to try to attract the students. Introduce a couple of fantastic modified people, who are familiar with Bethelham, girls across and both target. So it'll be, it'll be a seamless transition.
Okay, I, I assume and especially because I'm sure that, you know, Lily will be very, very helpful in any transition, but I'm glad it all kind of worked out for the varsity players because she's fabulous.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item number 10, correspondence for action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence action items A through C.
Second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
Are you able to bring up the policy on the greenie?
I'm sorry.
Are you able to pull it up to discuss it?
Yeah, but Tom?
Yeah, I have a question on that one, too.
It's attached? There we go, yes.
There's two things on it, that each student is an individual with his or her own abilities and capabilities, hence the student's achievement is evaluated. Tension should we get, I don't understand why that's in there at all. I mean, that doesn't make any sense to me at all, other than allowing a teacher, allowing somebody to grade somebody however they feel they need to. There's nothing objective about that at all. And, and to me, grading should have a consensus across the district. I don't think it's our job to grade kids or decide how to grade them, but I think it's our job to make sure there's a consensus and that it's fair and that it's equitable. And when I read this, grading, the second paragraph, grading will be based in part upon student improvement. How do you get a grade because you improved? Like, how does that affect your, like, you get a grade of C and then you get a grade of B, you improve, but do you get bonus points so because you did better? Like, that doesn't make any sense to me, that part. I mean, it seems like achievement, participation in classroom and activities.
Well, don't a lot of teachers take into consideration, you know, a student's attitude, their, their contribution?
Or should they? I, I mean, that's where I think the board is there. I mean, when I got, and I've had these conversations with administrators and things, but when I went to the eighth grade thing last year and they said, oh, here's all the kids that had a 92 or above average and there were 42% of the eighth grade class had above a 92, I was like, how is that possible? Like, that's insane to me. Like, are these kids really that smart? So I'm the pessimist always. Hardly that many pass the state test. So if you have kids from 92, getting 92 to 100 on every subject they take and they're not passing the state test, there, there's something off to me. And then last week, you said, you know, 327 out of 394 seniors have a B or A average, which is 80% of the entire class. To me, that means, I, if I see a B or an A on a grade, I would think those kids would pass the regions, not do remedial college work, not all do that, with a B or an A. And that's not true either. And I've had arguments on whether grades should be based on achievement or it should be based on effort. And the administrators I've talked to want it based on effort. The high achieving schools want it based on achievement. So it's very, it is something that needs to be discussed because, you know, you go, here's two examples of two kids, of people I talked to, and how I think the district needs to figure this out. A kid has 97s and above on all the tests and yet has 80s on their report card. Okay? Not doing all the homework, that's the answer. Okay? Another kid gets a 68 on the midterm and gets a 96 in the class. Okay? Neither one of those is helping the student at all and the grades should reflect achievement and they should help the student. And a kid who has a 68 on the midterm and an A in the class, doesn't make sense. It just, if you see an A, you assume they achieved and understood the material. So they can go that high based on that and they can go that low. I mean, who, who's going to achieve better in the future? Our goal shouldn't be just to get kids to walk across the stage to graduate, it should get them prepared when they're in college in the future. And achievement matters, I think, almost more than we're giving it credit for. Because you don't want to go to the mechanic and say, well, they worked hard, but, you know, they got an A but they kind of screwed up 20% of it, but you know, they worked hard, so we gave them an A. Or my surgeon's really nice and they, they tried really hard, but they kind of screwed up. So if achievement doesn't matter in school, how does it matter in the future? I mean, we're supposed to be prepping them for that and, and I think there has to be something that the board, whether it's this or in the future, sits down and says, this is how you guys are going to get graded. It's going to be X percent achievement, X percent participation in class, X percent this. There's classes in the middle school that's 40% is achievement and the rest is that, based on my going as a parent to the meetings. And I, I don't think that's good for the students. And I don't understand how an improvement score is in your grade. And I don't understand, yes, attitude, and the mom said to me of the parent that the kid got the 68, is furious that the kid got an A in biology. Okay? Because they said, they gave it to my kid because she's really nice and she does all her work and they like her and blah, 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 but that is not going to help her in the future. Because now she thinks she can fail a test and get an A. And I, I think you guys as the administrators need to work that out.
I can address some of that. We, we actually have looked at grading as an administrative team, quite frequently have discussions about it. The problem with grading is it's not an exact science and you could say, you're measuring improvement, there's standards-based grading, there's percentiles, there's, you know, point systems. The problem with having a policy per se where this amount is participation, this amount is achievement, is that depending upon different courses, that may look very different. I don't disagree that, that we're very inconsistent, but in looking at grading in general, we looked at different methods of grading. I know the middle school is kind of looking at this now and you're looking at some of the, the diagnostic data that we have available, how kids perform on state tests and then what are the grades assigned. The, you know, the, the age-old question is when you go to, for example, standards-based grading or you go to an achievement model only, and some schools have done that, they're now, students are now faced with, for example, you take achievement only. So you're not counting effort, you're not counting homework. Those students, their grades overall tend to drop. So communities where if they've done this, parents aren't happy with it, students aren't happy with it, because now when they're applying to colleges, they're being compared against other school districts that aren't grading in that same manner. The other component to that, when you look at grading, is when you can argue that we need to prepare kids for college, but when they go to college, professors don't have any consistent method of grading either. So I don't disagree with what you're saying that there needs to perhaps be some more consistency, but I'm not sure there's one particular model that fits for everyone. But I think that our faculty, our administrators are looking at how can we be more consistent, at least perhaps across departments or grade levels, so you have a more accurate picture of how students are actually performing. Because when you, I agree, when you have a teacher who's grading 60% based on homework or 40% based on effort, another's only on achievement, there's a lot of disparity there. So I think some consistency would be helpful, but I don't necessarily think with grading, unless you totally get rid of grading.
Well, you could do apply sections, you know, I mean, math, there's a right answer. Okay, so it's a very different thing than English.
Correct.
Or biology or chemistry, you know, but even the classes that, there's a right answer, have so much subjectivity to it.
Sure.
That it, it doesn't, I don't think it benefits the student.
Right.
You know, I, I don't care what they get for grade, you know, and things to me, but it almost becomes meaningless when there is no consistency.
Sure.
At all.
Right, so I think some consistency would be helpful, but I also think that it's not an easy task to-
No, I don't think it is.
To get to.
But I think it needs to be worked on.
And I think, in looking at, when we looked at, you know, do you go to an achievement-based model only or any kind of growth model, you can't also discount effort that students put in because that does go to a work ethic piece that's important for success in life. Some schools have two different kinds of grading on a report card or reporting mechanism where there's an achievement measure and they might have another section for work ethic, things such as that, that are more the softer skills that are important, so there's some of those to consider as well. But I don't think we'll have a solution tomorrow.
No, I don't think you will tomorrow. And I know, but I, you know, but I, I think the board is supposed to go general, but, you know, that each student is an individual, I don't really understand why it's there. Because when it says, lower down, it says, you know, if a child is in a different, basically like a special ed student and they have grade mapping, that's taken care of on the lower part. So you're not talking about special ed, you're talking about the general population. And that just seems to me, allowing somebody to basically give somebody whatever they want. Because if they should be, their unique characteristic is an accepted standard. I don't even know what that is.
I would disagree with you on that, Kate, because I think what that statement is saying is that there's not just one evaluative criteria for giving a grade. You have to look at the full student, their full effort, and then determine the grade. And I think that's what that statement is saying.
But that's already written out above.
I, I think, I, a couple of things. How I read that statement, and we're on the policy committee together and it actually was much more extensive of what they provided, I think it was a suggested text and we took a bunch of it out because we said this is kind of gobbledygook, we're not sure what it means. But I, how I read that statement is, for example, if there's a section that says class participation, students will enact that in different ways. It's not necessarily, okay, Johnny had five minutes participation, Rebecca had 10, it's whatever. It means there, there are standards and it says it later on, to accepted standards of performance in an educational setting. So we have the standards. How students meet those standards, not necessarily just the grading, I forget you call it performance or I forget what you call it, Jody, but the, the test part. But the participation part might look different based on each kids, how each kid participates or how each kid expresses his or her own views. That's- That's, for me, allows for the diversity of expression when a kid participates, not necessarily if they got a 70 or they got a 100 on the other part. Jody, remind me, what's that, what's that word? The test part, what do you call that?
Achievement?
Achievement. So there's the achievement piece, but it says there are other aspects of the standards that teachers weigh in grading a student, that, to me, that statement just says, students, that's going to look different for each student, not necessarily the, you know, the assessment piece.
To me, it says it could be a low-income, single-parent family, you have lower expectations because statistically they're there, and therefore you can give them higher grade.
I'm just saying, I'm, that's not how I, I'm saying, I'm reading, no, I'm reading that paragraph differently than you are, is all I'm saying, is, it has nothing to do with standards and low income and what the expectations are.
That's what it says, accepted standards of performance.
I'm talking about the district's accepted standards. The district's standards are clearly spelled out later on in a very large paragraph. So when I say the accepted standards of performance, for me, that's the district's standards, which are then spelled out. The other, the other thing that I'll say is, you know, I'm glad you're looking at the grading system and consistency, all, that's not, for me personally, my job as a board member, I'm not an educator, I'm not a K, elementary educator, I'm not a middle school educator, I'm not a high school educator. I would expect, or would hold you responsible to work with the appropriate folks, and Dr. Douglas, to work with the appropriate folks, to work out the grading system issues, because I don't have that expertise. But given there's some concern around consistency, or how do you enact this policy, that's up to you and the staff, and then you can report back to us, but I, as a board, I would be reluctant to say, well, this percentage has to be, across the board, has to be for participation, this has to be on test and assessment, because I, because each subject is a little different, I would assume every grade level's a little different, and then each teacher, I would imagine, has to have some flexibility on how he or she teaches. So I, as long as they're in line with the grading system and policy, and your expected standards, that, you know, you kind of get the marching orders from the board, then, then work on it at that level, because I don't think, for me, a board can say, well, universal 50%, or let's say 60% is going to be assessment, 10% is going to be participation, and whatever's left is going to be homework. So that's just my perspective.
I have one. Can you shift it back up to that paragraph? Okay, that's fine. My, no, not that one, actually the one above it. I just was concerned with saying that the district will use a uniform grading system, that the staff would feel that they, that, you know, if you go from room to room, that, you know, whatever requirements for the course would be similar in nature, and I, you know, wouldn't want that to be, because again, actually, from some of the things that were already mentioned, that, you know, depending on the subject area, the grade level, you know, there would be there, you know, there would be variations. So the uniform, the idea of a uniform grading system sounds like everybody has to do it exactly the same way.
I think this is more like A, B, C, that it would be, the teachers would provide.
Right, well, as long as-
Right, right. Right.
Okay.
Report card is standard.
But I was just, you know, reading it.
It's a very nebulous term.
Maybe we should clarify that. Maybe you can put a couple more sentences in there, to say what that refers to.
I would personally probably not suggest that. The reason being is, the district will use a uniform grading system. I don't know the development of this policy in the past, because this has always been board policy for a long time. But that could have meant, and, I mean, you have to deal with interpretations when you deal with policy, could have meant that you'll use a uniform grading system, such as our student management system, which means we have the right to use that grading system to provide our grades out to the students. That's how nebulous this policy is, and that's how nebulous most policies are, because of the way that you have to look. The more you refine it, the more you might limit the district as well.
Well, I just was concerned, you know, even parents interpreting it differently and saying, well, this teacher does it this way, but this teacher does it this way, someone's not following the policy. That's, that's what I was concerned about.
Any other? Yes?
I think we all read this through a different lens, and that lens is sort of our own experiences and our own, you know, professional capacity and other things. I think, I thought, you know, when I was on the policy committee, I mean, this discussion is pretty good, it kind of opens your, your perspective a little. I think uniform grading system is actually a must, I wouldn't make it any more specific, I would leave it broad, that's quite broad, that can mean lots of different things. I assume it means that, you know, we don't, we don't have one teacher that's handing out, you know, fruit as their grading system, and other teachers are using a numerical, I mean, we have a uniform system that is, is followed across the school district. I mean, going back to that paragraph that we talked about, that Kate was referencing, I think that, I don't read into it, kind of, the unique characteristics as a negative unique. I read that as, in my head, sort of, an example might be that particularly a language class, where participation is crucial, because you want children to learn to speak the language, that maybe you have a kid that is really not comfortable at the beginning of the year speaking out, and, you know, there are boards I sit on where people are not comfortable participating. So this is a life skill to learn, to be able to sit at a public table with your peers and colleagues, and learn how to contribute, and not feel intimidated or shy or whatnot in doing that. Maybe that kid, at the beginning of the year, that was a big hurdle and a big learning capacity issue for that, that student, and by the end of the year, you know, maybe they participated very minimally compared to someone else, but you know what, for that kid, that was a big deal. And when I read that, I was thinking in my head, you know, the unique characteristics of a kid that, you know, might be challenged in different ways, and one of them might be, participation is a real hurdle, they might be a great test taker, but they, a big life skill for them is to learn to speak in a, you know, in a classroom, and participate at a meaningful level. So I guess I didn't read it in sort of a negative way, but more, you know, the possibility of, of what would be challenging to that student, and, you know, the bar is set slightly different. And a teacher would know that, which is why I liked the flexibility that's inherent in this policy. I don't think we want to be specific, you know, teachers should be given the opportunity to say, you know, my class, participation is really meaningful, because I want to talk about, you know, government, I want to engage and have creative conversations versus a teacher, maybe it's math, who says, you know what, it's all about taking the test, and at the end of the day, I don't really care if we talk about it, I want folks to pass the test. So I think the flexibility, I thought, was pretty good.
Anyone else? Any comments on the policy? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
It's just the first reading.
But again, we got A and B as part of the, there's other components of the.
[inaudible].
Okay. Any abstentions? That carries? Okay, at this time, we'll, recognition of visitors, anyone who has, would like to address the board on any non-agenda item? So you can come up to the microphone? No? Guess what, pig students, that means you get to get out early. We just got to finish up future meetings, we already discussed them, but I'll reiterate them. March 19th, April 2nd, Tuesday, April 8th, Wednesday, April 9th is the BOCES annual meeting, some of the board members will be attending that. And then Tuesday, April 22nd, proposed budget adoption, May 7th, public hearing, and then May 20th is the budget vote and the board seats, as Dr. Douglas said, will be voting on the budget, and three seats are up this year.
Before you close the meeting, can I make a, Mr., could I request that Mr. Nealon, at the next meetings, if you could put an extra chair over there and a mic, just so when I shift over, remember where I was sitting, that way I can read the slides and have a mic. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
You could share your mic.
The first and a second. Any discussion? Everybody in favor? Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That carries, we are adjourned. Thank you. Pig students.